Are we going, Rose?
All righty. I hereby call the City Council Special Meeting, City of Buellton Council Meeting for November 10th, 2021 to order. Before we stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will have Councilman King lead us in, our city attorney, Mr. Murphy, is going to discuss 361.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two meetings ago, Assembly Bill 361 was invoked by the council. Each time you invoke it, it's good for a period of 30 days. We are asking that you invoke it again tonight. And by invoking Assembly Bill 361, that will continue to allow the public to participate by Zoom. It will also give council members flexibility if any of you are feeling under the weather during this pandemic for yourselves to participate by Zoom as needed. It would just take a motion and vote. It's not, doesn't need to be an agendized item, which is why we're doing it right now. Although if we do continue this into December, we will bring it back as an agendized item at that time. So it would be proper at this time for a motion to continue to be pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 for the next 30 days. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. A motion, please.
I move to extend 361.
Okay, a motion in two seconds. Linda.
And Reese.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, City Attorney. If I can get Councilman King to lead us in the pledge. Thank you, sir. If I can get Linda to do a roll call.
Councilmember Andresek.
President.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis. Vice Mayor Sanchez. And Mayor's here.
Here. Thank you. Any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No, ma'am, not this evening.
Public comments. I don't have speaker sips, but I know we have a public comment out there. Linda?
Yes, we do. I believe that Derek Glass is going to come up and speak.
Eva Powers is.
Okay. Both you.
Come on up. From the Botanic Gardens.
Thank you, certainly. One of each.
Is our current Wilderness Trail that we're in progress of developing. And the other one is a newest brochure, including a map of the garden.
This is on?
It is.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Eva Powers, and I am currently the president of San Ernest Valley Botanic Garden. And I'm here on behalf of the foundation, representing our board of trustees, volunteers, and financial sponsors. It is really truly delightful to have the chance to be here, given the opportunity to provide the council with a progress report, an overview of what the garden has become in just a few numbers of years. As you all know, San Ernest Valley Botanic Garden is conveniently located at 151 Sycamore Drive, right here in Buellton, next to Riverview Park. And I'd like to begin this evening by thanking the Honorable Mayor and the City Council Members, City Manager, for your continued support of the garden. It is perhaps a surprise to most of us how quickly the garden has become not just a hidden gem, enjoyed by a growing number of community members, but also to the local business community and travelers that are visiting the area. Hotels and restaurants have taken note, recommending their guests to pay the local Botanic Garden a visit. We know this because we get asked questions a lot, and we ask questions back, where are they coming from? To those of you who perhaps have not had a chance to pay the garden a visit lately, you don't need to worry. Derek Gloss, who's sitting over there in the corner, is a board member and volunteer, who fortunately is here to help us today, and he's put together a slideshow of moments captured with his camera that will run through my presentation. But to start out with, Derek is a professional photographer by trade, and he's managing the foundation's visual record-keeping through all of his beautiful photographs. Derek is also managing our social media, webpage, and all printed materials, and successfully helping us connect with the public garden with the community. We have really upped our games as Derek came on board. We will begin by taking you down memory lane, starting with a photo from an old press release. And that photo was taken near where the information kiosk stands today. And seen in the photo are two slightly younger versions of Puck Erickson and Carla Bello, two familiar faces to us all captured approximately 13 to 15 years ago. Yeah. And some of you might recall that back in the day, City of Buellton contacted Arcadia Studio and Puck Erickson to design Riverview Park. And to proceed with Riverview Park, a deal had to be made. The fishing game department became involved. So on behalf of the endangered southern, southwestern willow flycatcher, a sweet little endangered bird nesting in a thicket of native willow located in close proximity to Riverview Park, the city was asked to set aside two to two and a half acres protecting the precious bird habitat. Puck and Kyle got to think again, why not call the two and a half acres a natural habitat in addition to the buck? All that met the eye was inhabitable wasteland or concrete dump there from various construction and road sides. Construction waste was hidden from view by prox-tails, thistles, and mustard. And there was not a tree in sight back then. Why on earth would a flycatcher select this very spot as their nesting ground? Well, fortunately for us, they did. The request made by fishing games seemed reasonable enough, and City of Buellton adopted the idea, and Riverview Park was born. When revisiting the park and the adjacent two and a half acres, Puck saw something that nobody else could, a potential location for an outdoor education in the city of Buellton, a place where native flora, wildlife, and visitors could coexist. All the rest of us could see, all the rest of us could see was a heap of a mess. In fact, I recall a dear friend in this very room, well, actually, he's not here. And he was referring to the area as the Garden of Whedon. He was right. Maybe we can start the photos. So the photo that you saw there is the same year that San Ernest Valley, it was taken the same year as San Ernest Valley Botanic Garden Foundation was formed. A seed of an idea was planted by Puck, and it propagated, grew roots, and today the result is a public botanic garden representing plants native to Santa Barbara County. It has become a daily destination and home for a growing amount of wildlife. The number of visitors are also growing by leaps and bounds. Many asking questions, exploring, and enjoying. And some visitors have made it their daily routine to walk the garden. San Ernest Valley Botanic Garden is a fantastic example and role model, a testament to what a city and its community members can accomplish when they set their mind to it. And with the city's support, a nonprofit and board of trustees was formed. Ideas bloomed, fundraising began, handicap-accessible trails were installed. Five-gallon trees were donated and planted by volunteers and community members from all corners of the valley. With shovels in hand and blisters developing, we all dreamed of one day in the future, we will be able to take cover under the canopy of the same trees. Trees that the team barely breached our waist. Could our grandchildren one day get experience, get to experience majestic native trees planted by their parents and grandparents? Well, as a new grandparent myself, the answer is a sound yes. I'm sure there are a few of us in this room who can clearly recall several Multimadness Volunteer Days. Days when we volunteered to help spread the brown gold necessary to help improve the contaminated soil before we could even consider planting native flora. It was dirty work, but it was well worth it. That said, let us pass over to today, November 10th, 2021. Today, the garden is indeed a small forest of mature native trees, 100 trees to be exact. Their canopy providing cooling shade for native shrubs and perennials. COVID did not hold us back at the garden, quite the contrary. Volunteers are attending scheduled volunteer days from as far as Canada to the North Sacramento, Bakersfield to the Northeast, and Los Angeles to the South. A large number of volunteers keep returning to offer lending hand from Santa Maria, Orchid, Long Oak, Santa Barbara, and of course, every corner of San Ernest Valley. Valley and Santa Barbara County Schools, homeschools, and youth organizations such as Hidden Wings, Nature Track, Acorn Village, Children's Museum, Boy and Girl Scouts frequently sign up for outdoor education through our webpage. Being COVID compliant, the garden is slowly increasing our list of popular workshops, such as seed collection and propagation, pumpkin succulent class, Christmas wreath class, and more. This list of educational classes will continue to grow during years to come, I'm sure. And our growing number of volunteers are some of the most dedicated and hardworking people I've ever met. As you can see from the slideshow, we have tasks for every age. And while waiting for the trees to grow, the garden began to take shape one project at a time. Today, you will find handicap-accessible pathways, informational kiosk, medicinal garden, willow maze, tulip basket weeding garden, a wishing tree, which is a popular area, the wildflower meadow, grass meadow, children's amphitheater, storm drain mural, propagation and tool shed, and various informational signs. In year 2021, during COVID, the gardeners would dream many of us outdoors, and it is a place where we were able to socialize at a distance, work together on projects, as well as taking much-needed break from all the doom and gloom. Children were especially excited to run, climb, and jump and explore. Tile pillars and sign is one of the projects we did last year. The garden finally had its official, official entrance worthy of many admirers, and it was funded by no other than City of Buellton and San Ernest Valley Foundation. Pollinator garden, plants and plant identification signs were added, and a new large educational sign was also added to the pollinator garden. The reward is that we witnessed an increase in number of monarch butterflies and chrysalis taking refuge in patches of native milkweed, funded by Santa Barbara Garden Foundation. Rain garden, today visitors will find the rain garden at the center of the garden instead of a compost pile, representing the San Ernest River Shad, home to flora native to the river shad, including plants instrumental to the chumash. It has become an educational area, educating visitors how to direct runoff water to the best benefit plants, trees, and wildlife, and the benefits of using riparian plants to clean water, hindering pollutants from ever reaching our delicate watershed. Family garden and coastal garden, funded by Wood Clayton's Foundation and San Ernest Valley Foundation, also San Ernest Stone and Topsoil. That's where children are encouraged to use their five senses, five senses when playing in the family garden. And all features are made of natural materials, encouraging children to play and explore the outdoors. Local rotaries, Gaviota Coastal Conservancy, and our groups of volunteers assisted with the installation. And then we have the Fern Garden, Boulder Fountain, that is powered by solar. We have now water, thanks to the boulder, we have a water source for our wildlife that was installed by San Ernest Valley Union High School students under the help from stone artists long ago. We have new owl boxes, donation box, additions to the Mason Bee Habitat, pollinator plants. We have landscape boulders, additional stone benches funded by private sponsors, increased inventory of native flora, and increased number of educational sign and plant identification signs. The current installation is going on 2021 through 2022 is what you probably have heard about, and that is the Wilderness Trail. It is scheduled to be open to the public mid-December, and is designed by our very own Caris Clinton, connecting east with west along south-facing slope. Plants and minerals represented over three geographic areas in Santa Barbara County. Those are Figaroa Mountain, Gaviota Coastal Range, and the Channel Islands. Cut. We cut and secured a trail by hand, and installation is ongoing of steps and railings. And we're paying attention to drainage and installation of water bottles. That's made by wood that's supplied by our local tree companies. We're going to add installation of soil irrigation and plants. Also, we're looking at funding for artistic benches that are created by local artists representative of each geographic area. And then we have installation of educational signs. And we've reached out to those partners for service, the Gaviota Coastal Conservancy, and the Channel Islands National Park for information. And then we, of course, have the educational compost area that we're really excited about. It's going to be funded by Santa Barbara Water District and Wood Clayton's Foundation, and it's an area demonstrating ways to reduce household green waste by using various composting techniques. And we have an installation of bicycle rack scheduled, and those are in the shape of leaf. And we'll have signs displayed at the entrance, the two entrances to the garden, and they will display garden rules. That's going to happen pretty soon, too. And we're looking at replacing some concrete that's lifted by mature trees, and they will be, we'll either do concrete or papers. We're looking into that currently as well. And then for future installations, we're hoping for an event deck where we can host education workshops, lectures, bird watching, yoga, and membership appreciation. I think that is about all that I can share. There is a beautiful sign, and we thank you sincerely so much for helping us out with that. That really helped us put us on the map. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
Ready?
None. Beautiful presentation. Michelle Gruffo's pillars are just beautiful there.
They are. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Big thank you for the current event.
Thank you for the presentation and the beautiful photographs. Thank you. Any other public comments?
No public comments.
Then I close public comments. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have three items. Minutes of October 28th, 2021, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2021, '22, and the financial report for first quarter ending September 30th, 2021. Any questions of staff?
Move for approval.
Second.
All righty. Linda?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andresek.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis. And Mayor's here.
Aye. Thank you. Do we have any presentations tonight?
Presentations this evening.
Then we move on to our public hearing. We have ordinance number 21-03, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, pertaining to the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. This is an introduction and first reading. Director Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Get my report here. Thank you. Earlier in this year, I believe way back earlier this year, I had a presentation regarding SB 1383, which is California's organic waste reduction mandate. And this requires the state to reduce organic waste, such as food waste, green waste, paper products, and things like that, those disposal by 75% by 2025, which is quite a big task. It also requires the state to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. The nice part is that these targets are statewide, so it's not jurisdictional. So some states, some jurisdictions are able to really comply and do more than those goals, which would help cover, as it averages out with the state with, or other agencies that may not. But we are all still expected to implement the, the items and programs that we need to in order to comply in general. So by 2022, all local jurisdictions are required to provide organics collection service to all residents and businesses, establish food, the edible food recovery programs, conduct the education and outreach, implementing all of our new recycling procurement policies, capacity planning, and other coordination efforts to implement SB 1383. So ordinance number 21-20-03 is based off of Cal Recycle's Model Ordinance for Enforcement and Compliance. So at least that gave us a good foundation of what the state expects and what they requires us to adopt. Their model ordinance was modified to make it pertinent to the city of Buellton. And there's a few key, four particular key items that is in this ordinance that we must comply with that would be different from what our community is already working, has seen in the past. So the first one is mandatory solid waste handling. So right now, there is nothing in our code or provisions that requires our residents and businesses to obtain solid waste service from our service provider, which is currently Marbork. With adoption of this ordinance, that will be required. They will have to have some proof, which, with the contract services, that they're properly disposing of their waste. The second item is edible food waste recovery program. So this isn't particularly new to the city. I mean, it's, it's new in a formal sense that the city will be organizing and collaborating with other agencies in the county for this program. It's informally done now, as you've seen with like the senior center, they're working with rescue, veggie rescue, and those type of groups. So that type of program will just be fully expanded to work with the different restaurants and other businesses in, in the city.
Quick question?
Yes.
Will there be state funding for that?
There is actually a grant available right now. There's a really short turnaround timeframe, and we're, we're, our group is fortunate to have the county department spearhead our edible recovery program, and they are talking with some other groups. I think it's the Food Bank that they've met with recently that has a program or a project ready to go. So there's going to be some aspects that they can go after grants. And because they're, they're going to be shouldering a lot of, of the cost of the program. So it won't, it'll affect it and benefit everyone in, in general.
Right.
So there, there's a few, and we'll keep, keep an eye out for additional ones that come down the line. There is an advanced procurement policy. The city already has a general procurement policy, but this one, SB 1383 specific, goes into much more detail about recyclable materials, guidelines, and it goes just, it goes way beyond office supplies and those type of materials. You're talking about other items such as renewable natural gas, electricity, and, and different items like that. So that's a policy that they do, Cal Recycle does also have a model for, and we're reviewing that currently right now. I'm going through the draft first, when I finish that review to make it built and pertinent. That'll go to Chanel to review, and then we'll send it to the city attorney for review. And then that eventually will come back to council for review as well, as before we implement it next year. And then last but not least is capacity planning. Really, we've been just deferring all capacity planning for solid waste to landfill areas and, and the county, which it still is, we just will be in a much more closer collaboration and keeping track of this because all the agencies that are part of the Resource Center will rely on that capacity. Just, we're just going to have a little bit closer communication and collaboration as far as what goes on in that. So those are the, the major ticket items to take away from the ordinance that's before you tonight. There is a lot of, not a lot. There are some key dates I've provided as well for compliance. January 1st, 2022 is when all the regulations take effect and the state enforcement begins. We have to implement, start implementing all of the items required into the program. So technically, we, this is first reading, second reading will be a irregular meeting in December. And if adopted, then the ordinance takes effect 30 days after adoption. So it won't be quite January 1st, but it meets the essence of the regulation. January 1st, 2024 is when the local government is required to start enforcement on non-compliant entities. So we have a little bit of time. We said it's, it's going to be mandatory solid waste requirements for all residents. We said it's, it's going to be mandatory solid waste requirements for all residents and businesses. So we will need to make sure that we're going to do a lot of outreach. We already are trying to read with the different businesses and residents and making sure that they're aware of what needs to go on. And we have a little bit of time before we actually have to do some kind of enforcement on it if they don't. And then January 1st, 2025 is when they will, it's the deadline for when they're going, the state will start making their calculations, whether the state as a whole has reached the 75% reduction in organics and 20% increase in edible food. So with that, leave it open for council for any questions and open for the public. And we're requesting the council consider the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 21 dash 03. And we'll be able to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for both? I, I know that this is a mandatory state law or ordinance. It's a bill. In, in Napa, they have every resident's been given a little collectible bucket in their kitchen for the organic waste. Is that something Buellton? I know we've got our green, our brown and our blue cans and the green is for, you know, green waste. Is that where the organic, I mean, how, we're talking about January and we're into November already.
Yeah, the, the target for the organics is really geared from what we can tell to commercial businesses. So like the restaurants that have food waste, instead of just throwing away the food waste, trying to, that's what the edible recovery program is trying to sort that or send it if it's still usable elsewhere to that, you know, can be used.
So technically we're already providing an organic collection service to our residents.
Right. Yeah. So the three can, this distribution system is going to continue and we're compliant in that. The interesting part, so we, we actually have two businesses, the Marriott and one of the schools that does actually have the, that or separate fourth containers for organics. And Marbork has a pilot truck that comes out and collects those items separately. So that's a pilot that we have, we do have it as an option pilot program in the ordinance. So we can see if it's worthwhile. Fortunately, being part of the resource center, they sort everything there. So that's how we all ultimately meet the reductions as well, because everything does get fully sorted.
We may see rates go up because of this. Anyway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I go to public comment? Alrighty, opening it up for public comment. Linda, do we have any public comment on this hearing? No. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion and possible action. Councilman King? I didn't, I wasn't sure whether you would or not. Nobody else? Alrighty, then shall we make a motion to accept ordinance 21 dash 03 by title only and waive further reading?
I'll take that as a motion and second it.
Thank you. Linda?
Okay, Mayor Zera.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andresek.
Aye.
And Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Moving on to council member comments slash items. Councilman King, do you have any comments slash items?
No ma'am.
Councilmember Lewis, comments slash items?
I do. I'm getting excited to see the Fall Fest set up and I have had numerous comments about the Fall Fest and everyone, it just feels like it's, a lot of excitement is brewing. So I think it'll be really good for Buellton. So I'm excited to see how it goes.
Cool, thank you.
I share her enthusiasm.
Alrighty, that's a good comment. I wanted to thank our rec department for the Holiday Bazaar last weekend. We had over 75 tables. It's something they do, they, they don't charge residents and outsiders for a table to sell your crafts. And the, it was a really good turnout. I have mayor's hours and hardly anybody ever comes to see me, although today was different. And it was nice sitting down there and talking to people. It was just wonderful. So rec department did a great job. Written communications?
None this evening, Madam Mayor.
Committee reports?
Nothing, nothing going on.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Please.
Recently attended the ad hoc committee for the aquatics. John and I both attended that. It was, it was well attended. There were school board members as well as several stakeholders and obviously the, the coaches for swimming and water polo and diving, et cetera. And we were given a presentation for the, there's a new design. I know all of us probably saw the original design where it was an L shape and the pool was connected, but that wasn't feasible. There were some costs involved with that that prohibited some of that. So it has been divided up into two pools. They actually had to pare down the size of the swim pool because they didn't have enough space to put that original hundred yard pool.
Olympic size, yeah.
Size pool. So it would have moved into the basketball courts and the other stuff that's, that's also associated with that area. They, it's obviously still in the works. This meeting was prior to the, to the school board meeting, the high school board meeting. So I, I, I did briefly speak to Jan Clevenger about that, which he's the school board president or the, yeah, the board president. They don't seem to have any holdup on that, you know, I, obviously the biggest holdup on this whole process is going to be money. You know, they're going to have to demo all of that area. They have also sized down the amount of buildings that they're going to be able to facilitate in that area. Because of restrictions with the size of what they can use, the area they can use. So there's still a deficiency of several million dollars. You know, there are foundations trying to get as much money as they can for that project to go forward. And that's just a matter of, you know, hopefully, you know, they can procure the funds for that to move forward. You know, it's been a long time coming. There is a consideration about repairs may have to be made on the existing panels because they've been sitting for years. So you know, that's going to be another consideration going down the road. But you know, let's cross our fingers that it's going to go forward. It's going to be used, the large pool, obviously for the high school primarily for their events. They will not be able to, I mean, they could maybe squeeze it in there to have tournaments. But that pool may not be big enough to have regulation size water polo events, you know, and maybe only one at a time, you know, it'd be a pretty big pool for a single event. But to try to cut that down and have multiples, my daughter was in water polo for many years. And so some of these pools that are a hundred yards, they can divide them up and have several tournaments going or several matches going on at the same time. But it's, it'll be a tight squeeze to try to do that here. So you know, cross our fingers, we may have, we may be able to have events there.
They're really cutting the pool down then.
Yeah, yes, because of space considerations, you know, they can't really move any farther forward. So you know, so across our fingers, somebody steps up and gives us about five million bucks. But it's, everything's moving forward and I'll let you know in the next meeting.
And I know Kyle had put in for a grant, a state grant that we did not get.
Right. I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, there was a state grant. We did not get that. Some of the other areas were more worthy, so to speak of the money has got those grants. And then there, you know, the state may be able to come up with some more money at some point in time, but that's to be determined and I'll let you know.
Thank you. It's hard to play water polo when you feet hit the ground.
Yeah, you know, they, our kids have never been able to have a CIF event at our pool because it doesn't meet the regulations. Because the girls or the boys goalies on one end can stand up, you know, and that CIF rule says that the pool has to be deep enough that the goalie has to be able to tread water. So.
Yeah.
So even if we do get this one in, we will be able to have CIF events.
Good. Good. That pool is original with the high school and.
Sixty-five or eight or something was when that pool was put in. Yeah. Been a while.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the update. I remember going to the mission to have the, the pool blessed.
Was that five years ago?
At least, at least. Yeah, Monique Limon was assembly anyway. Yeah. Alrighty, thank you very much. No other committee reports. We move on to business items. Agenda item number five is discussion of broadband strategic planning effort. City manager Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you'll recall at our last meeting, I gave a little hint as to this item upcoming tonight. When the city council asked to have some consideration given to bring more effective broadband service to the community here. As it turns out, there is an effort underway, there's been an effort underway for a long time to bring broadband to underserved areas within the whole central coast region here. But there is a more recent effort that's been put forward to try and do some initial planning for the extension of broadband services into the area. Right now, a good chunk of that effort is being spearheaded by SB CAG in their attempt to prepare a countywide strategic plan for broadband services. The county board of supervisors is allocated approximately 200, has allocated, I guess $200,000 to this effort. Those funds were, are being acquired through the ARPA program. This leaves $100,000 that's left to meet the cost of the proposed strategic plan. SB CAG is therefore turning from the county to the individual cities to supply the rest of that $100,000 of the funding. So in an effort to bring a little more light to this topic, answer any questions the city council might have and discuss the city's participation and funding. Margie Kern and Bill Simmons are here. Margie's with SB CAG, obviously. And Bill Simmons is with the Broadband Consortium Pacific Coast. Is that right? And I will turn this over to them for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council.
You can take that off.
Oh, okay. Okay. My name's Margie Kern. I'm the executive director of Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, commonly known as SB CAG. And I hope you know all about us. We're a council of governments under a joint powers agreement between the county and each of our city governments. Primarily, we're responsible for distributing local, state and federal transportation dollars. And we also act as a forum to address regional and multi-jurisdictional policy, public policy related issues. And so this is the reason why broadband has been brought to SB CAG to help facilitate this process. So over the past couple of months, we've been hearing about some funding opportunities, both at the state and federal level. And those are coming to pass. Last week, the, the federal government passed the infrastructure bill, which included $65 billion for broadband. And the state of California has promised $6 billion in their budget as well. So we anticipate a huge influx of funding to help us meet our broadband needs. So the SB CAG board expressed an interest in getting ready, making sure that we have, we understand what we need as a region. And we can make, do that assessment and implement better broadband access to our stakeholders in a very cost-effective and efficient manner. So in July, the SB CAG board directed SB CAG to form an ad hoc committee of the board. So five members volunteered, two county and three city. And so that ad hoc committee met and recommended to the full board that we developed a collaborative approach to developing the strategic plan that I mentioned. So they asked me to reach out to each of the cities. So I've been doing the road show. I was in Santa Maria last week and on Monday we did carpentry and solving. I was able to use my broadband in the parking lot of the solving parking lot to attend the carpentry meeting. And then I went to the solving meeting after that to ask them to participate and, and also a financial contribution. So at, at the board, a little bit of a correction. It is, it's 400,000, so 200,000 has been taken care of by the county. So the remaining 200,000 is being requested from the cities. So we had a little bit of a debate at the SB CAG board on how to figure that out, how to divide this up, you know, should we do some internet subscribers or, or, you know, any other.
Size of the city.
Size of the cities or whatever. So we came down to population because it seemed like the fairest way to do it. And the smaller cities kind of outvoted the larger cities. So things have a way of working out. So they directed me to ask each of the cities to contribute based on their population of the remaining 200,000, just on the city, since the county already put up their 200,000. But before we get into the action before you today and getting that direction, I do want to introduce Dr. Bill Simmons. He's with the Broadband Consortium of the Pacific Coast. And he is our technical expert. You know, I'm, I'm a facilitator, a decision maker, you know, more of a bureaucrat. He's the, the expert in the room. So I'd like him to stand up and give you just a brief overview of what we're talking about with the strategy and answer any questions you may have. And then I'll come back out, up when he's done.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question before you go away? Okay, go ahead, let the doc sit.
Welcome, Dr. Simmons.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just want to do a brief flyover about broadband, the broadband consortia in support of what Margie's asking. The broadband consortia has been around since 2014. We're a tri-county consortium, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County. We have our tri-county events across the street. Marriott seems to be a central location for the three counties and it works out really well for us. And so we've gotten very familiar with your community and very happy to be here tonight. When the consortium was established, we have, we're funded by the California Public Utilities Commission. And what we were focusing on were the rural areas, little communities like Queyama. How do you build a business case to take care of communities like Queyama when you have to run fiber all the way up the hill and all of those kinds of things? And that also is very much the challenge we have in the social economic challenge communities is how do you build that business base? And so the Public Utilities Commission makes funds available for literacy programs and for those kinds of unserved and underserved communities. And the consortia have been established to focus on. Well, that worked really well until COVID. And COVID kind of turned everything upside down. We found out that all of our assumptions were wrong. We couldn't have, we, people weren't interested in telework prior to COVID. And now we're zooming everywhere in all, in all things, you know? And we found out that in the previous life, pre-COVID, business parks were very important. That's where you have your broadband. That's where you have your fiber. You know, the, the place where people live, the neighborhoods, that's fine. Well, what happened in COVID is we found out that if you have two working parents and you have kids going to school all together, you don't have capacity. You don't have bandwidth required to be able to do that. And we just don't have the infrastructure in the neighborhood, in the residential areas that we need. So obviously it was a wake-up call. It was one that we didn't see coming. And, and, but now that it's here, we're having to really take it on and do something with that. And so we're in hyperdrive. There's a number of funds that are available today at the state, federal level, but there's a lot more coming. There's a new word out there that I, new for me anyway, it's tranches funding. And you know, and I'd never heard the word up until a number of months ago, but now we have like a tsunami wave after wave after wave, this tranche, that tranche and the next tranche. And many of, most of it, a lot of it has broadband written right on it, all over it. The state is recognizing this will be the fourth utility. It will, there will be broadband for all. There's a lot of, it's, and let me back up a little bit and just talk about what broadband is and what it is not. In fact, this, the standards are shifting. It used to be six megabits up, down, up, one and a half up, six down. Now it's like 100 and 100. You go into communities like Chattanooga and it's a full gigabit speed up and down. And so that's very confusing. You know, it's, what we tend to focus on is the fiber in the ground. And in, that is really where it's at. You can, you've talked about DSL, you talk about 5G, you talk about cable, you talk about wifi and wireless, it's all broadband. It's, we're talking about different kinds of technologies that will deliver broadband. But the fact that if you have connectivity with your devices, no matter what technology you use, that's broadband. It's, and there's a word ubiquitous. It's, and there's a word ubiquitous, the ability to connect anywhere with anything, you know, to the, to the internet. That's broadband. And that's what we're talking about and saying broadband for all. And that's the, the state mandate, that's going to, the federal mandate in terms of where the funds are going and what the investments being made. And so as a consortia, we have telecoms as our stakeholders, we have municipalities as our stakeholders, the three counties have been stakeholders. We, in terms of the partners, we have the economic development, the regional economic development organizations, REACH, Econ Alliance have been a big part of what we've been doing. The EDC down in Ventura County, all working together, convening meetings, talking about how do you leverage assets? Looking at maps where the fiber is, where the fiber is needed. It's one of those situations where everybody brings their marbles to the table. We don't, with all of the funds that are coming down, there won't be one funding source. What we really have to do with the strategy is figure out what exists where, where are the gaps and how do we close those gaps? And so it's a conversation. And then after the conversation occurs, you start focusing in on those communities of need and the literacy funds that are available and in terms of helping folks understand and get comfortable with the technology. And hopefully all boats will rise. That's, that's the intent. That's the direction it's going. That's the mandate. So in a nutshell, that's where we're at. That's what we're doing. I wanted to pause one last little story before Margie coming back. We've seen some real leadership here in Santa Barbara County by the two mesh. About a year ago, they submitted for a grant, received $50,000, came up with a broadband strategy for the reservation. Part of that strategy leverages what we call the North County Fiber Ring. It is a ring that interconnects the communities up here. And they've been really interested in interconnecting the various facilities they have throughout the valley. And, and, and so from that grant for their strategy, that was $50,000. They now have about six and a half million in, in, just in the last 12 months in terms of the ask that they have the NTIA, the state of California and EDA for additional funds. And they haven't even gotten to the new money that's just been authorized and it's coming in directions next year. So they are moving out, they're, they're, they're working in areas called the middle mile. Middle mile is what interconnects communities to each other. And then once you, once you get the communities connected in through redundant connections, and there's one from either side and coming from multiple directions in case one fails. Then you have the last mile, and the last mile is house by house by house. And those conversations only that occur within your community. Our interest, our job is to facilitate, is to, is to help you find those resources. The term is show already. Our deliverables would be the applications that your community has for this funding. It is knowing the spots in your community that are priority areas and having the applications ready to go and have you part of the larger county, regional picture in the same way, working with all the other cities. So every, no city is like any other city. Your strategy that is part of this plan will be unique to yourselves and your priorities, in, in your needs. I'm thrilled to be partnering with SB CAG because they know roads, the physical highways, you know? But what we're talking about is the virtual highways. And, and, and we see an awful lot of opportunity to look at all the lessons learned in the physical space and take it to the virtual space and do very similar things. There is a role for the public sector to play here, especially in these areas that need. At the same time, there is a, the industry partners are doing, are doing great things as well. And we need to bring both of those to the table and close the gaps. So that was my presentation.
I have one question before you.
Sure.
How, how does this square with private companies? I mean, broadband now is provided by private company, companies like Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, whoever. How, how does this all integrate itself in with those private companies?
Yes, it does. And it's, and it is a delicate spot because the private companies, the problems we have today are because the areas that are underserved, they don't pencil out for the private companies. The private companies really do focus on density, you know, for the return on investment. And so if you're going to have, one of the things we've learned, for example, in the communities of need is the school system has been making through the COVID funding. It's been making a lot of the payments in Santa Barbara County area on behalf of these communities of need where prior to COVID, they weren't needed. And, but the private companies weren't in there, the subscribers weren't there. And they hadn't gone there because it didn't pencil out. And, and so it's a, it's a serious conversation when you get to the rural areas. You can't get there without the public investment. And so the dollars from the state will get us up the hill to Quezama. But get fiber to the private areas, to the areas of need. And, and yes, the conversation will be important to have private companies there. I'll also say though, you know, in terms of the industry, and I, I grew up as a private industry advocate. This is not, the telecoms are well west right now. And, and we had incumbents and we had a cable company and a phone company and that's all you had in the incumbent rules. When we're said, when all is said and done, there's something called open access at this point. And so when, when we walk away and the job is done, we're, we're really going to want a healthy competitive environment. So you'll have your income and still continue to be here, but you're going to have the opportunity for other entrants to come into the market as well.
So I guess I can.
It's going to be different.
Well, I guess I could phrase this a different way. Is the, is public funds going to supply private companies with access? In other words, you're putting fiber in, but is that going to be broadband free for everyone? I mean, somebody's obviously want to, going to want to make a buck out of that. So it, with, with all this that's going forward, and maybe I'm putting the horse in front of the plow. I'm sure you guys are in, in conversation with private companies. But with this funding, especially like what was mentioned about the Biden money, are they going to put in infrastructure? Because I know when you're talking about fiber is the fastest that we know of. Technology right now. Is public funds going to put the infrastructure for private companies to provide for individuals?
Yeah.
Is what my, guess what my question is? Because somebody's going to provide that broadband to somebody.
And, and the answer is yes, there are best practices in all three models. There is a municipal model, there is a hybrid model where the, you know, P3, public-private partnership. And there's also an exclusive private model. And so there are certain communities that have variations of all of those things. And as we get to where we're going and we, you understand what the community needs, that's going to be a conversation that probably occurs right here. In terms of where do you want to go and how do you want to do this? You know, it, it, it's, some communities don't want, it, it's an awful lot like all the other utilities. You, you have, you're going to have to have a decision. You, are you going to let industry take care of it? Or are you going to play a role in it? You know, are you going to, is it going to be a utility that you want to start managing and providing oversight? The funds will be there to have that conversation and the investments required will also be there. But I can't tell you how it's going to end because we haven't gotten there yet.
Right. And that's why I said maybe I'm putting the horse in front of the plow. But that, but, but in your conversations, there are, say, some scenarios where the city of Buellton could provide broadband to our community. And then you like trash collection, pay the city of Buellton for that service.
That is, that is.
I guess that's.
We reached a tipping point where it wouldn't even thought of prior to COVID. Now it's being thought of, and I think the momentum is shifting towards municipal.
Gotcha.
Ownership and operation.
Madam Mayor, if I can chime in here for just a moment. I think, and we can get into the, the, the provision of service discussion. That, that's actually something that will come further down the line. But I think the, the way to look at a model like this is to separate the, the providing of a service, the providing of internet access from the actual installation of the infrastructure. And so if we do that, you can look at the installation of the infrastructure and the public involvement in that in much the same way you look at the installation of public roadways for the benefit of the private trucking companies. We build the roads, the trucking companies and everyone else uses those roads to provide services to our residents. And if we look at the broadband system in that manner, engaging in the type of activity we're talking about here to plan and implement an infrastructure to, to lay the fiber in the ground is the building of the roads. And then the trucking companies are essentially these private businesses that come in and use that fiber that's been laid in the ground to then provide services directly to the businesses and the residents that, that need that. And so that, that's a gross simplification of the, of the matter, but I think it helps go to, to try and separate or to try and eliminate the concern that we might be throwing public money at something that's ultimately going to benefit private companies.
We, that's, that's a great analogy. And it's, it's absolutely right on it. We, the public sector will own the roads, but we don't, we're not encouraging you to be in the transportation business at all.
Right. And I, and I guess my point was that somebody's got to get paid for that.
It'll be, it'll be the telecoms through their subscribers.
Right. So the city is giving that underserved community access to a service they wouldn't otherwise have, but they're not providing the service at this time.
Could I ask a silly question? I, I'm, this is, this is all brand new to me. Broadbanded, it's, it's cable in the ground at this point, right?
We're.
Fiber in the ground.
Yes, it's one of many ways, but yes. Fiber optics, cable, very broadband, but yes.
So do they, does that go?
It can be on poles too. It doesn't have to be.
It can go on poles. Okay. So it doesn't have, we don't have to cut up all of our roads to get this to our residents. Thank you. I just, it's like, I just see little.
Yeah, and a number of providers, you know, will, will want to provide it wirelessly to you as well. So you can have a transmitter and cover a neighbor, a city block, you know, based on it. But you've got, the community will need to have some kind of fiber mesh backbone written is a better.
And that would go down, say, one of the, like highway 246.
Crisscross through the community and provide, and then we want providers to come in and use it. Right.
Got it.
Madam Mayor, my, for example, when, when the Trabucas put in my project, everything got buried. So all the cables were underground and then they just feed it to the house. But fiber optic would, could go a multitude of different places.
Could go in there.
Out in San Ynez, they buried a lot of fiber out there. So they're probably not going to rip all our streets up to put fiber in the ground so they could go in the existing poles.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I know Sam Cohen has been doing an amazing job. To match. Thank you. Alrighty, Margie? Your backup.
Close on the closer. So we did prepare a memorandum of understanding that we're asking each of the cities to look at. I'm not sure if you're prepared to do that tonight or not. But it outlines the roles and responsibilities of SB CAG as well as the jurisdictions to participate in this process and the financial contribution. Financial contribution for Buellton is whopping $3,531.27.
Sold.
Okay. And that's your, for your information, you're 1.77% of the city population in Santa Barbara. So that's your, that would be your share for the 200,000.
And this is for a study.
This is for the study. So the study, we have a super ambitious schedule. And he and I are talking about that as, as we speak, of getting this done by June of 2022. Wow. So, you know, I, I think I'm negotiating this contract to go to December of 2022 because I, I kind of know how government works. And it's a little, little slower than that. But, 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 you know, these opportunities are coming, we want to be ready. And I, I know he's really excited to get this done and so am I. So I, we just would appreciate your support and looking forward to having all the cities participate. And we'll get us to, to the finish line of the study and then implementing that study will be the next time probably I talk to you.
Wonderful. Any questions for either Margie or Bill? Then I open it up to public comment real quick. No comments, speakers, no public comment. Okay. Bringing it back to council, this is a discussion, but do we want this to come back at our next meeting to be able to provide the funding for Buellton's part of the study?
Right. We, we would, we would want to bring it back at the next meeting to formally approve the MOU. And Scott Hellme, I believe, do a budget amendment as well.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
I have direction. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you so much for coming from Oxnard and Santa Barbara, all the way up here. We're so used to people zooming and it's so good to see you in person.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
It's going to reflect in your next evaluation.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on to agenda item number six, the 2023 housing element update. Consideration of award of contract and entering into professional services agreement. Ms. Keepers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The city is required to update its housing elements every eight years. The current housing element cycle ends in 2023. And so by February 2023, the city must have adopted an updated housing element, which is to be certified by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So knowing this requirement, staff apply for and receive permanent funding through the local early action planning grant as well as, or better known as LEAK, and the regional early action planning grant, otherwise known as REAP. And these grant programs are administered through the state of California. And the primary purpose for the, for the city, city applying for these grants, which is similar to the purpose of many other cities throughout California, is to cover the cost or at least partially in some cases of the required housing element update. Between these two grant funding sources, there's currently approximately $162,400 available to cover the cost of the update. And the most recent housing element update occurred in 2015, 2015, which is consistent with the eight-year planning cycle requirement. In 2015, what is the current housing element was updated by city staff. However, since the last update, a significant amount of state legislation for tuning to housing has come into effect. And the, the current proposed update will take into account recent changes in state housing law, changes that have occurred in the city since the last update and will ensure that the city zoning ordinance is consistent with the adopted housing element. So there are several factors that contributed to staff's decision to go out for an RFP for a consultant to prepare the housing element update. One including that there's limited staff resources available to address this very important and complex update. The fact that there is available grant funding program set up by the state, which we again received, applied for and received funding for. And that coupled with the fact that there's increased oversight on the part of the state to ensure that cities are in compliance with all of the recently adopted state housing legislation. So all those things considered, staff felt that it was important to have a consultant with experience updating housing elements to prepare the housing element. And of course, with partnership and with city staff as well. So all of that being considered, on August 6th of this year, staff put out the request for proposal to conduct the housing element update. And the city was soliciting proposals through September 3rd of this year, at which time a total of three proposals were received. All three of the firms that submitted proposals appeared to be qualified to do the work on the housing element update. So included in your staff report is a table that just simply breaks down the overall cost of each of the proposals that, of the three proposals that were received. So what I'm referring to as proposal two, at this point, stood out to staff as having the qualification, the timely resources to prepare the update as well as some value-added services that staff feels are very important to ensure an efficient update process of the housing element. So the firm that staff is recommending to the city council tonight to award the contract for the update is Civic Solutions. So Civic Solutions' proposed budget is $116,430. And exhibit A of attachment one of your staff report includes the proposal that was received by Civic Solutions. And attachment one sets out the proposed contract with Civic Solutions, which is under a contest situation. So to cover the value-added services being posed by Civic Solutions, it's really mainly two things. So one being the GIS and graphic services that would be specific to the housing element update as well as the inclusion of what they're calling a strategic advisor, which will assist the city and the consultant team as a whole in communications and coordination with HCD. So the city does currently have GIS services. However, staff feels that the GIS and graphic services that would be provided by Civic Solutions would allow for an efficient update process and would really eliminate the need to pay, you know, the city's current GIS consultant to do the work as well as reduce city staff's time in coordinating those services with the city's GIS consultant. As it relates to the strategic advisor, which in this case would be Veronica Tam and Associates as part of the Civic Solution contract. contract, does have extensive experience working with HCD to ensure that um the city ends up with a certified housing element and that process is as efficient as possible. So these um value added services are one of the primary reasons for the increase in cost in the Civic Solutions proposal when you compare it to the lowest cost proposal received. Um, so listed in your staff report is an outline of the various tasks that the consultant would undertake as part of the update. So I'll go through all of those in detail, but just to mention that the tasks generally include uh general project coordination, public outreach to the community as it pertains to the housing element update, preparation of the actual housing element update, um, as well as updates to the zoning ordinance in response to the update. The proposed budget um for Civic Solution Services would be again for a total of one hundred sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars, uh, which would include the entire scope of the project. Um, and between both the LEAK and REAP grant funds, again, there's approximately sixty two thousand four hundred dollars available to cover the cost of the update. So therefore, it's not anticipated that the budget would be impacted above, you know, already allocated, which is anticipated to be reimbursed the grant funding reimbursement process. With that, staff's recommendation is that council consider authorizing the work then work effort for updating the housing element for the six, for six cycle housing element and direct city, the city manager to enter into the Civic Solutions for the professional services outlined in attachment. One, had a cost not to exceed one hundred sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. I will note that George Buell, uh, Senior Vice President, President of Civic Solutions is here with us on Zoom tonight and is available should the council have any questions. And I'm also available for any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Before we go to public comment, do we have any questions for either Andrea or Mr. Buell?
No ma'am.
No questions? Mr. Buell, I appreciate you zooming in tonight to to answer any possible questions. It sounds like it's a very thorough uh timeline and and I, how could we go wrong with the gentleman named Buell in charge of Buellton's housing, uh, urban housing?
Almost sounds like a conflict of interest.
Okay, if we don't have any questions, is there any, I open it to public comment, is there any public comment on this item?
No ma'am.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for possible action.
Is this a a direction or does this have to be a motion, counselor?
This would be a motion.
This is a motion to approve the contract.
Okay, then I uh move that we approve the RFP to Civic Solutions uh as indicated by staff not to exceed one hundred sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars.
All righty, thank you very much, Linda.
Okay, Councilmember King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andresek.
Hi.
And Mayor Zira.
Hi, thank you very much for joining us and uh thank you for your diligence.
Thank you very much.
For our last agenda. Did you want to, Mr. Buell, did you want to say something?
No, nothing other than thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be doing business with the city and we look forward to helping you and guiding through the process ahead.
Thank you very much for your help.
Okay. Good night.
Good night. All righty. Business item number seven, resolution number twenty one dash fifteen. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California for the purpose of budget amendments from operational changes related to fiscal year two thousand twenty one, twenty two. The budget through the first quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. Ms. Zamora.
Madam Mayor and City Council, before you tonight is the proposed budget amendments for the first quarter of fiscal year two thousand twenty one through two thousand twenty two and their corresponding resolution. As part as the normal budget process, staff reviews the budget quarterly and presents any budget amendments to City Council. The majority of the proposed budget amendments tonight were items that were previously authorized by City Council in prior City Council meetings. Uh, there are just a couple that need to be um authorized tonight. And these budget amendments will be formalized into the budget via the proposed resolution. The funds that experienced changes in appropriations and revenue projections are the General Fund, Gas Tax Fund, Local Transportation Fund, and Measure A Fund. In addition, a new fund was created, which is Fund O thirty two, to record the monies received from the American Rescue Plan Act. The total general fund appropriations due to these proposed budget amendments increased the previous appropriations by sixty one thousand seven hundred fifty four dollars. The increase in these, in this amount, um, comes from various account budget amendments. Uh, the first one's in the City Manager Department and it, that will just increase seven hundred dollars to reflect the medical and expense reimbursement plan act that was increased from seven hundred fifty dollars a month to eight hundred dollars a month. The second change in the general fund was in the non-departmental department, and this one decreased by thirty thousand and it was to the visitors bureau contract. It just, at the time the budget was adopted, we did a conservative estimate of four hundred and fifty thousand. Council approved a contract of four hundred and twenty, so I'm just reflecting the thirty thousand dollar decrease here. And then the next uh department that experienced an increase in appropriation was the Public Works Park Department. And this item was previously authorized by City Council. Um, it was a twenty one thousand one hundred fifty four dollar increase to reflect the increase in the city landscape contract cost. And the same with the second department, landscape maintenance, that's also associated with the new landscape contract service cost that was awarded by City Council. And the final general fund appropriation increase, which was in the planning department of fifty six thousand two hundred dollars, uh, again, was previously authorized by City Council and this re- this reflected the cost of um the traffic impact analysis guidelines. Uh, the following budget appropriations in the gas tax fund uh was a result of an omission that was found through the fiscal year. Um, and this increased the contract services engineering line item in the gas tax fund to reflect the traffic safety studies expenditure. And this is something that's done um annually. And to cover that cost, we're pulling fifteen thousand dollars from the gas tax reserve. And then the local transportation fund uh kind of goes along with Measure A Fund, uh, just a little background, Measure A money, we receive Measure A money and through Measure A, we allocate or we transfer money into the LTF fund. So that's all you see this five hundred dollars touching one place and then it's reflected in the other. And this is just an increase in the San Yenaz Valley Transit Dollar Ride. Uh, they increased their annual cost of fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. And then the last budget amendment here that's being proposed is to add the six hundred and ten thousand two hundred fifty, fifty three dollars that was received from the American Relief Plan Act. Uh, the overall fiscal impact is an increase of sixty one thousand seven hundred fifty four dollars to the general fund um and net increase to the gas tax fund of zero and as well as the LTF fund and the Measure A fund, a net increase of zero dollars with the offset of the transfer from reserves to cover those costs. Um, staff recommends that City Council consider adoption of Resolution Number twenty one fifteen, twenty one dash fifteen. That concludes my presentation and will answer any questions that City Council may have.
Thank you very much, any question? No questions, open it to public comment, any public comment?
No comment.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion and action.
To approve Resolution twenty one fifteen, to make the budget amendments from operational changes related to fiscal year two thousand twenty two.
Second from Councilman Andresek.
Okay, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andresek.
Hi.
Councilmember King.
Hi.
And Mayor Zira.
Hi. Thank you. City managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Just a couple items tonight. Uh, the first one and the most exciting one is Fall Fest. We are about to get across the finish line. If you've been out to Avenue of Flags, you have seen the work is beginning. Uh, it will continue tomorrow and we will have opening at, I believe, four o'clock on Friday evening. We will have um parking in various locations. Uh, for anyone who would like to attend, we encourage as many residents as possible who can walk to walk. Uh, if you cannot walk and you need to drive, we would uh recommend that you park at P. Sub Anderson's parking lot. If that parking lot is full, then there is a remote parking lot with shuttle service available. And that would take, uh, that will be um uh at the vacant lot across the street from the Marriott. Uh, and there will be parking there Saturday and Sunday, Friday night, that will be available. If the P. Sub Anderson's lot fills up, then they will open that lot up and and provide shuttle service that night. Otherwise, Saturday, Sunday, it will be there the entire time. Hours are four to ten on Friday and eleven AM to ten on Saturday and Sunday. And um we hope as many residents as possible can get out there and attend that. Um, secondly, I did want to bring up just a follow up on last uh meeting's item regarding our COVID nineteen testing facility for the County Board of Education. Uh, staff met with the um with the the testing company with a couple of new locations. Uh, the location they felt was best for their needs uh was the Plaza location at Buellton Town Center there in the Albertson CVS parking lot. As it turns out, that Plaza area is owned by the CVS Corporation. I was able to get in touch uh with the CVS Corporation's property manager through uh through the manager of the CVS store there. I have had preliminary discussions with him on that. Uh, initial discussions are favorable, they don't seem to have any objection to that. They're just working through their legal department right now. The testing uh company through the the County Board of Education is not concerned with the timing at this point. It's going to take them a while to get up and running. So hopefully within the next week or so, we should have confirmation that that will be there. And they should get up and running shortly after that, but I will keep you apprised if there are any changes to that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and uh that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, just as a side note, that riding a pack animal or a bicycle under the influence of alcohol is also a jailable offense. However, twenty five years in law enforcement, I never arrested anyone for either. But just as a reminder.
Okay.
So if you bicycle over there, you come back under the influence of alcohol, you can't be arrested. Or ride your horse.
And there will be drink tickets sold there. I had one resident ask me, there will be drink tickets sold there. And uh it should be just a, everybody should just take deep breaths and relax and have a good time.
Good suggestion.
All righty, if that is it, then I adjourn this meeting and we'll see you all on Thursday, December ninth at six PM. Thank you.